Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Meeting Monday, December 8th, 2025. If you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please show all councilmembers present, except for Councilmember Mead, who is currently in Hawaii drumming it up with...
Representing Tawney Town at the...
Little drummer boy.
Pipes on Parade. That's who he drums with. So he's over there in the Pearl Harbor Parade is what he was doing, and he'll be back here soon. So up next, we have the approval of the minutes from November 19th, 2025. Any... or looking for a motion in regards to that?
Approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Kerry's up next. Would any councilmembers like to make a statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items tonight? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward down to consideration review. Would any councilmember like a minute to review the Tawney Town Police Department memo that is sitting on our desk?
Oh, yep.
Yep. Sounds good. We'll pause for about three minutes while you review that real quick. Just let me know when you're good. There's one thing that isn't in the memo, and that is the cost of that leave, and it's $2,518.56.
And that would be in addition to the...
It was like 14.8. Jim, just to check, though, we've had a... we've had about a $700 reduction from that previous one, right?
That is correct. Some of the leave was able to be utilized since we got the figures initially, so that actually goes down about $700.
Yep, from that number Wednesday went down 700.
That puts it like 16.5-ish, give or take a couple hundred bucks.
Under me here.
It was like 14.8, so it's 14.1, I think. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Paul Park, like 16, 17 grand, something like that.
Yeah, that sounds about right. More additional time on that?
Nope, I'm good.
Sounds good. Proceeding. Anybody else need additional time on the memo? Proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Introduction ordinance 22-2025 Amendment to Fences and Walls. Again, this is the introduction on this. We talked about it last month. Again, bear with me. It's a... I'm a little under the weather. So we talked about it last month. The main thing here is we're taking out the permitting process on it. There's still regulations regarding to the fences. The idea is, you know, if you're going to put in a fence, you still got to look that up. And, yeah, so again, it still allows us to enforce if there's any crazy, wacky stuff that happens, but it doesn't mean that our guys are going out there, you know, proving fences without the ability to actually check line of sites and whatnot. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Introduce.
Yep.
Motion introduce.
Looking for a second.
Okay.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Kerry's. Jim, we're not doing adoption on the industrial, right?
We would like to have a little more time to review that and...
So that'll be scrapped, and just so you guys are aware, that's going to have to go all the way back to introduction, since it's gone past the 70-day mark. Unless some... unless somebody wants to make a motion.
I do have a question about it, though. Are... what else are we considering?
They wanted to make adjustments on the actual business, what was allowed, right? And then how it was structured in there.
And we've been having some conversations about data centers and battery energy storage systems. The second may tie into solar energy production more so than restricted industrial, but data centers, I think, are going to be something we need to think about for restricted industrial districts. Now, the code is, you know, data centers weren't really prevalent when our code was last updated, at least when we looked at the restricted industrial district, so I think we need to take a look at that.
So you're thinking about allowing it and ways to allow it, correct?
If there are any things out of the ordinary that we want to, you know... But yes, I'm thinking we would... basically, it's a permitted use in the state, so we need to figure out where it best belongs. And I think that's it, but I just don't know, because they are often accompanied by energy storage systems, if there need to be any special criteria for them.
Okay, and again, it's mainly in line with phone, what the... basically where the state's going with stuff.
Our planning director just shared an article from the American Planning Association with me today about data centers, so we'll kind of see if they have some best practices in there.
Any additional comments from council on that before I proceed? Hearing none. Proceeding forward. City manager report. Jim, do you have anything additional for us?
Nothing to add this evening.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? City manager report from council. Hearing none. Proceeding to department reports. Jim, anything additional?
Unless there are questions on the department reports.
Questions from council?
Nope.
Hearing none. Proceeding forward. Old Business. Approval of revisions to general specifications for street and stormwater. Jim?
No update there. Yeah, hopefully, we will have some discussion on street widths with our planning commission. They've had a rather full agenda and some busy meetings the last couple of months, and we just haven't squeezed in that conversation about streets and what they really want, because I know we've had some back and forth at this level about what the ideal width for streets is, so...
Okay, questions from council? Heading down to welcome sign. Counsel, you guys should have received... and again, you had received it before the workshop meeting, with some of the numbers of what those costs would look like for regular sign and assign with LED display. Again, just consider that. What is the agenda for January for kind of where council wants us to go from here on that? Consider that. Consider some of those examples that... I think we sent those over last time was the example. So just consider the cost, consider the examples, and then just be thinking of where you want to go from here. If that's a cost you guys want to incur to put those signs out there, you know, which level, what kind of level and what kind of design you want to go with. My ask is to have that ready for the January meeting so staff can start, you know, going whichever direction council decides. I'd like to have the full council here when we go to go for that.
Yeah, do you... do you want us to discuss that publicly, or do you want us to be, you know, like kind of what our thoughts are?
You know, start... my ask would be send feedback to us at the admin level so we can kind of be designing or tweaking. So when we come to the January meeting, we can have some examples of what everybody's looking for. So we're not just trying to do that mid-meeting. But again, the ask is, you know, share that with admin staff so we can start preparing that. But the January will be that meeting where we're really going to be looking for direction on that. Any additional comments from council? Hearing none. Proceeding forward to new business. Monthly financial report. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Approve.
Looking for a second? Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Kerry's. Up next, account payables. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council in regards to accountants' payables? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Kerry's. Parking meters. Council, you should have received an update of the various different pricing models between the two examples that we have thus far, which is Frog Park and Exact Park. The city manager should have also... he sent out an email to kind of explain where it goes from here. There's some questions we got to get answered from S H A in regards to the whole process. But again, our ask on the admin level is between now and January, start thinking of the, you know, which direction you would like to head. Take into account the cost of the two different systems, and each of you should have a... McKenzie's actually... You guys should have received at the workshop on Wednesday, but McKenzie's going to send out a digital version of those packets as well, so you guys can be reviewing them between now and January. So again, just make sure you're considering what those entail, the cost behind them. And again, you know, if that's the way you guys want to go in regards to this. Additional... any questions, comments, concerns from council that we should be considering?
Can you help me to understand the difference between the two real fast? I believe the 11X, is that the one that goes like directly into the concrete, or is that the, like, the puck?
So Frog Park is the puck. Jim, what was... what is the exact...
They both have surface mount or recessed versions of their sensors. So we would be, because we're in the area where it snows, we would have to do the recessed ones that are, I believe, epoxied in place. Obviously, we don't know yet if state highway will even allow us to do that, since these are state roads. So they asked for a little bit of information, and I just sent them kind of the overview sheet from one of the ones that we had talked to. But the sensors are similar between the two. One of the firms, Frog Parking, seems to have more in-house ability as far as the software piece of it and the options available there.
They're not local. They're, uh... they're, I think, actually such as New Zealand, but they have United States basis as well. But again, they have more control over their software. Their actual subscription costs are less unless you want the protection package. And then the other one, you're mainly... you're going to pay less in the upfront cost for the actual hardware, but you're going to pay more yearly in the subscription for the service. That's kind of the main difference between the two is, you know, one is going to be you have more control over kind of the software, the analytics that you're going to be looking at in one team, and the other one is more, again, cheaper hardware side, but you're going to be paying for more of that service as a subscription kind of model.
In Wednesday's discussion, it was mentioned that, you know, the primary objective is to generate turnover of vehicles so that after two hours, people will move their cars and not leave them parked there all day. The idea of a two-hour limit, I think... I think that would have been the takeaway, that people are expecting there to be a two-hour limit, but both of these firms do have the ability to also do, you know, pay for parking so that, you know, the first two hours would be free, but you would pay for additional time after that. So it's not necessarily park two hours and then risk getting a ticket after two hours, unless that's what we decide we want the policy to be. So they have the ability to do two hours free, and then you pay for longer stays.
How do they actually do that? Is that something they do on their phone, or...
Yeah, it'd be...
On a website or what?
It would basically be an app for the... whichever firm we went with.
Another thought that I had was...
You have to scan a QR code, so it might be something like that, too.
Is there a provision that would prevent somebody from parking for two hours, then backing up into the space behind them and for another two hours, and then moving back into the original place for the next two hours? I mean, how do you avoid that?
Technically not. I mean, that's the...
The loophole.
That's the only loop... I mean, that is the loophole, the two-hour free parking. You could continuously rotate it. It's actually... we have other ordinances in the city that are similar to that, such as, you know, trailers, big trucks with trailers. You could park them for one hour on city streets, but technically, you could go out there and move it, bring it back, and you could restart that timer. Just, I guess, it really depends on how motivated you are to retain that spot as opposed to parking somewhere and leaving it be for eight to 16 hours. But...
Well, I could see...
But that is a loophole, yes.
I could see a tenant from the downtown area, you know, rather frequent. Why wouldn't they do that? I mean, you set your phone for an hour and 55 minutes, and then come down and move into the place in front of you. And then another hour and 55 minutes, you back up to the one you just left.
If parking is available to that extent, to where I can just go forward and go backwards and gain the system that way, then...
The point is, there's never any lack of parking downtown. You could do that with...
I feel like that's a...
It would be a rare situation for somebody to be in front of you behind you.
I feel like that's a very, like... it's a lot of work to have to go out there every two hours, too. Like, I get stuck doing stuff sometimes, and I forget what time it is, especially with the work. It's a lot more effort than I think some people are willing to put in.
It would just make more sense to park.
Somebody's willing to do that once, but like, if someone's willing to do that every day...
They'd do it in a heartbeat, I guarantee you.
And it does vary based on what stretch of the road you're on. I mean, certainly, on West Baltimore Street, there's a lot more parking pressure during the workday, that there are very frequently parked cars in most of those spaces on West Baltimore Street, but then directly across the street from the city office, aside from the lunch hour, lunch period, typically, there are very few cars parked, you know, in that whole block. So, you know, I think it really varies depending on how close you are to certain businesses. But there certainly are situations and times where somebody could come out and roll their car, you know, one space forward and get another two hours, and...
And realistically, you could do that now if you have a handicap placard. You get free four-hour parking. So let's say you park in a spot, you use... well, again, there's no way to really meter it currently unless you go digitally chalk it. But realistically, if you have a handicap placard right now, you could do the same thing. You put it up four hours. You roll back, come back in the spot four hours, have started again. So it isn't something you couldn't technically do right now if you had a handicap placard, for instance. But I would say your time efficiency is just going to be better parking in a regular municipal lot than coming down every two hours and moving it, especially if we're able to digitally monitor when you've hit that two-hour mark. Because again, if we start putting tickets on cars at the two-hour mark, it's going to become apparent real quick that it's just cheaper to go park in a municipal lot, walk that extra time, than trying to set a timer for every two hours. And again, nobody's going to do that. I... I'd be... I couldn't imagine too many people wanting to go through that level of effort to retain that lot, but it's not impossible. I just... And again, to Nick's point, if you're able to, then the parking's available to begin with. So do you need the turnover if the parking's already available? Again, you can always game a system. I mean, there's... you're never going to create a foolproof system here. It just...
The only way to have a foolproof system would be to have, like, one or at least one person literally monitoring all day, every day, walking, you know, walking the streets at the designated times, which I don't think is something that any of us would be okay with. I mean, maybe I'm wrong there, but I haven't heard any of any desire for to have, like, a full-time meter made. So I think there's always going to be donut holes that aren't going to be able to be addressed.
And that's why you shouldn't just make a decision because... because somebody can exploit one part of it. I mean, at the end of the day, there's always a way... there's a way to exploit most things, even most of our ordinance currently, but you shouldn't try just because someone...
We'll find a way.
So I mean, that's my only thing on that, is that... to your point, though, yes, yes, they could.
It is a donut hole. A lot of effort, though.
I mean, if they're willing to go through the effort...
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel, too. If you're going to do that, okay, like...
It's a lot more work than I'm willing to put in.
There's no real alternative to that than just keeping meters and getting a meter made. That's the only other alternative. And again, I don't think there's enough economic productivity that is generated by that to offset a full meter made. Again, I think this is kind of the closest you get to the best of all worlds.
You need more than one, because shifts and time off and all that stuff. So you're probably, if you're doing meter maids, you'd have to have at least two, maybe three. I don't think that's going to happen.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns on parking meters? Hearing none. Proceeding forward. C D M Smith, 2026 rate schedule. Jim, did you have anything else to add before I...
Nothing new. I think the memo and the packet sums it up.
Yeah, you just want a consensus or a motion on that?
I'd like a motion and vote, yes.
That's fine. Looking for a motion on C D M Smith, 2026 rate schedule. Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Kerry's, last up. We had it on the agenda for Wednesday, but we ended up taking it off. But this was submitted by the police department today as kind of another one-off special case that we currently have ongoing. I'll kind of read out the memo, what it says. On 11/12/2025, PFC Redcliffe Darby injured his knee. This injury was duty-related and was reported to workers' compensation. Before his injury occurred, he had requested 24 hours of personal leave and 48 hours of annual leave. These hours were approved and scheduled before his injury occurred. PFC Darby has been using sick leave since the time of this injury and will not be able to use his requested time off subsequently, resulting in him losing those hours at the end of the calendar year. It'd be requested that the combined 72 hours of annual and personal leave be approved in a buyout situation since PFC Darby is unable to use this time by the end of 2025, and just add due to an injury that occurred at work, or a duty-related injury, I should say.
He's okay?
Yeah, he's got to get surgery on... is it his knee? Yeah, it's his knee. So he'll be out for a good minute when all that occurs. But again, the idea is he did have the leave scheduled. He did anticipate to use it. He just can't because of his current situation. You know, this is a recommendation from the chief, the major from the police department. I support it in regards to, again, this is an injury he related and that was related to duty, and there's no viable way for him to use this leave before he loses it. Additional comments and questions from council before I... did we get a consensus or was it a motion last time, Jim? It might have been a motion. Yeah, it was a motion. Questions, comments, concerns from council before I entertain a motion?
It's, um... He requested time off before his injury. Why wouldn't we count the time off as his paid leave? And not count it as sick leave? It just makes sense that you'd use your leave up first and then... Then go into sick leave if you ran out of time off.
If I'm remembering for...
Wouldn't you always use your sick... your time off before you get your sick leave? Most people don't even have sick leave anymore. They just have a certain number of days they have off, and they can use it for anything they want. It's kind of outmoded in this day and age to sign sick leave to employees where it's just part of their normal routine, is being timed off, whether it's sick leave or vacation. It doesn't make any difference. They have X number of days to take advantage of, and that's what they should use. I don't think you pay somebody for sick leave, then pay them for vacation they didn't take because they were getting paid for sick leave.
Does that make any sense? So in this scenario, for instance, and again, I could be misremembering, but I thought workers' compensation... I thought you use sick leave before you even get to personal leave, but I could be misremembering. I know for the feds, Rachel, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you used sick leave before...
So if I was to go out for my... when I go out for my surgery and before I can utilize any type of leave programs that they have, I have to use all my sick leave.
Yeah, so normally, for most... I would argue for most governments, you do have to use the sick leave first, especially if it's related to an injury from duty. So I think in that regards, if he has the sick leave to cover the days and he's on workers' compensation, then again, it's kind of that unique scenario where he did have it scheduled, but he doesn't have to... He doesn't have... we can't force him to use that personal leave instead of his sick leave, for instance.
I mean, there are different banks of benefits, is the way that I understand and view this. Like, you have sick leave, you have workers' comp, you have personal leave. They're all supposed to be used for different purposes, and this doesn't fall into any of those purposes. So therefore, he still is entitled to have his personal time off. And if he's not able to take that, then... Why we're in the situation that we're in? So, I mean, he's just, in my mind, entitled to the compensation because it's a different... it's a different bank, a different bucket of... a different benefit bucket, I think is what I'm...
And you're correct in that regard. Again, it's a different benefit. Does it make sense for him to have to use his personal leave in regards to an injury sustained on duty while going through workers' comp? My argument would be no. I would, again, argue, just in the best practices, I will say, I think the payout is the best practice.
That's a human resource disaster, in my mind, to do something like that to somebody.
I agree.
Like, why would you want to work for a place that's going to screw you, right? Like, that's something that I think we need to think more deeply about, right? Like, I don't... I wouldn't want... I don't want anybody to be working for the city government, knowing that we're going to be out to screw them over 2,500 bucks.
It's kind of one of those things, you know, we don't pay people the best, but the one thing we can do is try to make sure we're taking care of our people in the best way that we're able to. Regardless, you know, this is leave that he has earned. He doesn't have to take his personal leave and use his sick leave for the workers' comp and duty-related injury.
It happened in line of duty, man.
Yeah. With that said, I'm going to look for a motion in regards to it.
Approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Kerry's. Up next, we have councilmember reports starting with councilmember...
Roosevelt.
Kalanock.
There we go, okay. I think you finally got it right. Nice. So let's see. We had the annual candy cane hunt and Christmas tree lighting this Saturday, and there was a good turnout despite the chilly temps. This was the last in-person event of the year for Parks and Rec. We do still have the holiday decorating contest open, though. The registration deadline is this Thursday, the 12th. So if anybody's interested in entering, please reach out to Lorena by Thursday. Some prizes include gift cards to a local business of the winner's choice. First place gets 100 bucks, second place gets 75, and third gets 50 bucks. Winners will all be announced on January 5th. And then early next month, we will be releasing a community survey on parks and recreation. We encourage everybody to take a few moments to take the survey and provide feedback and suggestions so that the Parks and Recs department and the city can be better informed as we move forward in planning facilities, amenities, events, and programs for our community. And there is no new update on the Memorial Park expansion project. They're still waiting on state highway and the county forest conservation approvals, so...
Councilmember Miller.
On November 3rd, all active officers completed fall firearms training. For specialized training, we have Officer Dakota Myers attended AR-15 and M4 armor course on November 5th and 6th, and this allows him to certify... or no, this certified him to diagnose and fix problems that are... that may be encountered with duty-issued rifles. And then Officer Zach Myers completed youth mental health first aid on November 13th. And this is an online course provided by the National Tactical Officers Association, and it's designed to educate attendees about how to identify, understand, and respond to an adolescent who may be experiencing a mental health or substance use challenge. And then for statistical report, total dispatched or generated calls for service was 417. Total citations issued, 64. Total warnings issued, 85. Total adult arrests, 14, and total juvenile arrests was six. Terms of awards, promotions, we had Officer Jordan Longo, who graduated from the Baltimore County Police Academy on November 13th. Officer Longo completed the academy, finishing first in his class, so that was a really big deal, beating out all the Baltimore County cops or recruits. It was pretty neat to attend and witness the whole ceremony aspect of it. I was... me and the mayor are glad to be part of that. And then for community outreach, Chief Baker and Major Mitchell attended the Veterans Day ceremony that was held on November 11th at the American Legion. That's about it.
I'll try to fill in for Councilmember Mead, from what I can remember. I don't have my pack in front of me. So Plan and Zoning approved the concept designs for Taco Bell and McDonald's. In addition to that, the comp plan is still ongoing. They said they have one of their more productive meetings this November. In January, they will be taking comment from people who have received letters in regards to the growth area, if I'm remembering correctly. When are those ones that are meeting in January on that? I won't put you on the spot like that, but it's later in the month. So, you know, keep an eye out on social media, keep an eye out on the calendar for the website. You know, make sure if you're interested in that comprehensive plan, what's happening in time, make sure you attend that. And again, if you received a letter regarding your property being within the growth area, again, that will be your time to speak on it.
Should be January 20th.
January 20th will be that comp plan. In addition, me and Councilmember Mead on January 10th will be... In addition, me and council member Mead on January tenth will be at the Tawny Town Library, holding a table talks with the council and mayor and will be discussing planning and zoning as well as the comp plan and what's going on with that. So if you're interested, that'll be starting at ten A M. at the Tawny Town Library on January tenth. Everyone's welcome to attend, you're, the talks don't have to be particularly just planning and zoning. You know, it could be anything Tawny Town related and we welcome everybody to come out for that. That's all I got, Jim, was there anything else I should mention for your stuff?
I think that's the highlights.
That's the highlights. Council member McCarron.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to meet with Kevin and Randy last week and they brought me up to date on things going on in the Department of Public Works and everything seems to be going pretty well. They, as suspected, the water levels in the wells have stabilized despite the lack of any significant rain. The fact that folks aren't washing cars and watering lawns has seemed to have allowed us to slow down the pumping rates that we were concerned about earlier in the year. The Arrow, who is inspecting the lead line service inventory for our, for our town, is about to get started on installing new service lines and, or, one of the concerns was that our code called for cover lines to go to the houses and we've been able to correct that and use plastic lines at a lot of less expense. So that's a good thing for citizens. Ordering project finally has come to an end, I don't know how long that's been going on, but it looks like we're finally over that, that hump. Other than concerns for the building project, we, we talked about the utility, the new utility building and the desire to maybe build it in stages rather than try to build it all at once and then years make additions and thinking that the overall cost of the project would be mitigated if we did that and it sounded like a good plan to me, so that's, I think Kevin and Randy support that, so. They were very positive about the way things were going. They, we, we had a termination in that department recently that was a little bit tough to, for, for guys to handle because we don't have too many terminations. We started counting up the hours and the years of service in that department and it's overwhelming, with a lot of people with twenty and thirty years service in that department, Kevin's just celebrated twenty-five and. It's good to have stable employees and, you know, the, the success of our town and, and over the years has been, can be directly attributed to the stable war force that we've had, so that's real positive. Anybody that's an employee or anybody that's in a business with other folks helping them with that business knows that, so. It's good to see that that department is, seems to be stable and, and moving forward, so. Proud to be, be associated with them.
Two-fiftieth, you got anything for two-fiftieth?
Oh, two-fiftieth, let me give you a little bit of information on that. We met at the library with a county two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday celebration last week, the mayor was there. Bob Jones and. But we had a, had a good conversation, there's a lot going on countywide and locally. I was very proud of the progress that we were making. We've got a celebration day scheduled for the sixth of June and we really have a lot going on in that latter part of May and first part of June into July. And I'm concerned about that a little bit, we, we, on the plate, we may, may not be as effective. We've got a Memorial Day parade scheduled, we've got this event on the sixth of June, there's a.
A run, right?
Parade on the fourth.
There like a five K or something?
Five K in between there, so that's, that's, and the wine, and the wine and art festival. So, you know, within that, within that six, eight-week period, we've got a bunch of stuff. So we, we'd probably need to take a look at that and see if that's, we're biting off more than we can chew right there.
I agree with you, that's been my only, my only worry is, you know, don't, don't go too grand where we can't do all the stuff that we, you know, need.
Well, that, that's true, but again, we're look, we've got a lot of good ideas going on, we're, we're and the, and the, working in cooperation with the museum, we're working in cooperation with the historical society, we're working in cooperation with the town and the state. And everybody's, everybody's talking, everybody's sharing plans, everybody's working together. We've, Bob's developed a program where he'll be able to identify important people, important points of interest around town by going on the website and, or phone app and, and plugging in information and being able to come up with historic information for various addresses. So there's a lot of, a lot of neat things happening and it's a big job, but it's, it's, it's kind of coming together. It's, I, I was wondering in the first couple of meetings whether we were going to.
Jim, I just want to touch on one thing, D P W building design. The last I remember from council was to halt further changes to the design other than the original concept that had been done.
We haven't spent any more money on it. But that was the direction, was not to spend any more money on the design.
It is, staff time is money though.
Okay.
Again.
Horton has, has scaled back the building, getting rid of all but the, I guess, the essential shop portion of the building, getting rid of the training room and things like that, so.
That's my thing, don't, don't circumvent direction from council.
All right.
Other than that, I am looking for a motion of adjournment. Looking for a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.